Folks, we're back. This is Steve Sands with Jim Jones with Veterans in Politics. Today, our guest is going to be Aaron Johnson, candidate for Henderson City Council Ward number one in next year, 2023 special election. And just to let everybody know, this show is sponsored by Ron Quince. Ron, Jim, you have any rants?
No, I actually, I wouldn't consider it a rant. It was, had a really fun night last night. My aunt and my cousin and her husband and their daughter were in town. We went to Aviator Stadium.
Where's that?
It's up in Summerlin, right across the street from Red Rock.
Okay.
And went and watched, saw all the Christmas lights. Had a really good display up there. So yeah, that was really fun. I haven't seen my Aunt Julie in like 10 years.
Well, that's taking you out of your comfort zone, isn't it?
Yeah, a little bit.
That's not something you normally would go do.
No. Yeah, like if it wasn't for my Aunt Julie and my cousin Shanna and her husband Joe and...
You would have just stayed home.
Yeah, I literally would have just stayed home.
That's good. What's her name?
Aunt what?
Which one?
Aunt Julie.
Aunt Julie, come once a month.
Yeah. Yeah, she's, she's actually my dad's youngest sister. Yeah. And it was really nice. And then Shanna is my youngest cousin. And then her husband Joe came out and their daughter Adriana, which is just... That was the thing that like was so neat for me is because as an adult, I'm literally just walking around going, alright, more Christmas lights. But seeing that seven-year-old, so excited and seeing those lights and just love taking pictures. And yeah, it was, it was actually very inspirational.
And you know, this is the last show of the year.
Yeah.
And we're blessed with Mr. Johnson doing the last show for 2023. And I just want to recap a little bit for, I mean, sorry, for 2022. My bad, I'm a year ahead of myself.
Right, yeah, me too.
I just wanted to recap, this year we had a great election.
Yeah.
We had a lot of candidates that, that we had come through here. I was, I was thinking probably around neighborhood, probably around 200 or so. Candidates came through here this year. And we had a lot of debts, you know? Stanley, Washington, Rolando LaRaz, Wes Brummett, Stephanie, sorry, Tiffany Watson. These are names that just come to mind.
Johnny Jackson.
Johnny Jackson. The RJ, Robert Foss was the RJ guy. Oh my God, I forgot.
Brumman, right? Wasn't it something like that?
Wes Brummett was the other one, a Marine that passed. But, oh, and I went to his funeral too. Jesus. I do have short-term memory loss, see? So near. But I just, I just wanted to express my deepest condolence to all the family and friends that, that have passed away this year in 2022. And knock on wood, hopefully we don't get anybody, at least that we know of, in 2023. You know, but there was, I think this year was a lot, a lot of debts, more than any other year that we've had. I think I counted probably around a dozen people that we know passed away this year. So, and it has nothing to do with COVID. So I just, I just wanted to put that out there. And I wanted to thank all the candidates that make this show so successful and got endorsed and won their election. And the ones that didn't, you know, better luck next time, I guess, right? I mean, I ran five times, so I don't know what else to tell you.
Well, and the nice part about it too was...
You ran once, right?
Yeah, I ran once. And the thing too about, and thank you for spearheading the Toys for Tots drive.
Oh yeah, that's another thing.
Because like whether they got our endorsement or whether they didn't, or you know, and like I said, it's not easy coming on.
No.
You know, and you're getting asked pretty tough questions, but they were willing to come in anyway and donate toys that they paid for their own dime and didn't get any credit for that. So yeah, that was, that was really nice of all of them to do that.
And since we're talking about the Henderson City Council, I just wanted to just do a shout out to our endorsed candidate, which everybody thought that wasn't gonna win.
Right, yeah.
Carrie Cox!
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah, Carrie Cox, I just love Carrie Cox. She's, you know, a lot of people...
She was considered the underdog.
Yeah, and a lot of people didn't give her a chance, which I always thought was interesting. I'm like, hmm. Some people were saying, oh, she's too conservative. I'm like, she's a kindergarten teacher.
You know, and she went up against a, I'm gonna use this name, a real hustler.
Oh yeah.
Because she did try to steal the endorsement from Carrie Cox. With us sitting there, I mean, wearing the shirt. But anyways, I don't care what her excuse is or what have you, but it is what it is and we're moving forward from that.
Yeah.
And you have any more rants, Jim?
Oh, just one more thing. And I don't know if, I wanted to end this year on a positive note. And so I'm gonna make sure it's on a positive note. But like going back to what I was saying about going to Aviator Stadium and seeing my cousin's seven-year-old daughter Adriana. One of the things that struck me, and you know, I think about things differently than most people, I guess. But just watching her as this young kid running around and so fascinated with the lights and everything, I started thinking, I'm like, you know, she's just not caring about what color another person is. She's not, she doesn't care if you're Democrat or Republican. Like she's just so full of life. And I think that like...
Children learn what they live, my brother.
Yeah, exactly. And I think that's what adults need to learn.
So if a child is racist, they got it from the parent.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, you know where I took the words out of my mouth.
That's where they got it from.
So I'm like, adults need to learn that. Because you know, there's a lot of people who'll say, well, no, that's just their upbringing or that's some social economic system that preprograms to be the, for them to be racist. No, the parents are the reason why these kids are racist. Whether it's white or black, it doesn't matter.
But I just, I just want to do a shout out to everybody that make 2022 a success, especially in the political community. Like Michael McDonnell turned the table around and got Joe Lombardo in office.
Yeah.
You know, although we didn't see eye to eye with Joe Lombardo, but you know, he is gonna be the governor now. And I wish him the best of luck and I hope he successfully run this state the way it's supposed to be without increasing our taxes. And another one come to mind is Kevin McMahill, who run, who is now gonna be the new sheriff. I mean, we're gonna have a brand new 2023 coming up. We're a new sheriff, new governor, new lieutenant governor.
Lieutenant governor, like, you know?
There's some new judges that are gonna be in office too that, you know? And Eli Rahani, I hope that you just decide to seek another appointment and run in 2026 for judge. Because that was, I mean, because of her name, she got booted out, you know? And I just thought that was ridiculous. There's gonna be a show coming on soon about the Missouri Plan, just to let you know. And I'm sure that's something you, you're very interested in.
Oh yeah, yeah.
So it's coming up in January and you're gonna be surprised who the two people are that's gonna be coming and talking about the Missouri Plan.
Because you know I'm a fan of the Missouri Plan.
I know you are.
I have been for many reasons.
And I'm being pushed in that direction all of a sudden because of what's been going on with, with the past two judicial elections, you know? But we'll see what happens. And I, and I hope this legislature that we have, that's gonna come into session in February, I hope that they propose some really good bills. October 1 was that bill that came up, is law now that you can't be criminally prosecuted for traffic tickets, which I think that was a good bill. I don't think that anybody should be locked up because they can't pay their traffic ticket.
Right, yeah.
So, was October 1st? Oh, January 1st.
January 1st.
January 1st, my bad. January 1st, so that's, that's good too as well. But you know, we could go to Mr. Johnson now.
Yeah, other than that, I just want to make this real quick. I just want to thank you for, thank you Steve, for all that you do. Because I don't think people realize like how much work you put in. And you get criticized a lot by people that aren't in the know. But I'm in the know. So I try very hard not to criticize you.
Well, you know, there, I'm glad you brought that up. There, there is no article that's out yet. But myself and veterans in politics have won every single court case that was thrown at us. And I believe it was five court cases that veterans in politics and myself got sued and we won them all. And, and I want to thank the, the judges, I mean, sorry, I want to thank the judges too. But I want to thank the lawyers out there that helped make that possible. Annette Levy, Maggie McClechy, Adam Breeden, Richard Scotty. And I think I missed one, but anyways. And if I miss anybody, thank you anyway. But those are the ones that made those possible. Yes, veterans in politics have a lot of lawyers because we're in the business and people don't like what we say and don't like what we do. And they try to shut us up and silence us and throw out the Constitution. But with these lawyers, the Constitution is preserved, so.
Yeah, it's amazing how much money it costs these days to actually have to get lawyers to defend your First Amendment rights.
Exactly. Which should have been automatic, right?
Right, yeah, exactly.
You know, but, and I want to thank you for, for being by my side, you know, ever since 2007. You know, and now we're in 2022. Do the math.
Yeah.
And you never, you never ran away, like some people, but we won't mention any names. But with that, did he take my fan away? That Mark Jonas?
Yeah, he's got a plan.
All right, so we got Aaron Johnson, who's a candidate for Henderson City Council Ward number one in next year's special election. If the city council decides to vote for it, which I think they probably would, they would do that because the people have a right, right? The people should know, the people should vote for their, their elected officials, I think. But let's talk to him. And we own the studio, Mr. Johnson, so we could go all the way to midnight if you want.
Yeah, sorry, there was, sometimes we got a lot to go, because this is our last show of the year.
And you know how we got pulled into owning our own studio? A little side note is that we were paying airtime from 2005 and we had a set time and a set hour and that was it. We couldn't, we couldn't veer from it. And, and the last time, we thought it was a friend of ours that was doing our airtime. Apparently he was a Judas and we kind of removed ourselves from him, decided to buy this building and have our own studio and here we are.
And here we are, tugging along.
Here we are, tugging along.
When did you buy this building? When did you buy this building?
2019 December, December 2019. Nobody lives here.
No.
No, it's converted into professional office. Although it might look like somebody's bedroom, but it's not. There is no beds in here. But Mr. Johnson, you're running for Henderson City Council. Could you give us a bio?
Yes, sir.
And by the way, thank you for your service. I see the Marine Corps lapel right there. I love Marines. And anybody that don't love Marines, they should just leave this country. Please.
So I, you know, I born and raised in Fairbanks, Alaska. Started, graduated high school, went to Northern Idaho, University of Idaho and struggled a little bit with academics and finances and decided I was gonna join the Marine Corps. While on active duty, it was where I finished up my bachelor's degree. Thank you to all of you that helped pay for that.
Did you go in as an officer?
No, no, sir, I enlisted, yeah, enlisted. And was able to attend school while I was there and graduated with my bachelor's degree before I ended my, my active duty commitment.
How long were you in for?
Just four years, just four years.
What was your MOS?
Canine handler for the Provost Marshal.
Ah, you know, my daughter wants to do that. She's 14.
Oh wow.
Canine handler.
That's good, yeah. Tell her, tell her to study hard.
Wow, I should have her talk to you.
For sure, for sure, yeah, yeah. In the Marine Corps?
No, she just wants to do it.
Just do it?
Yeah. She wants to go to college for it.
For sure.
And then she wants to go into the military.
Very, yeah, very nice.
She wants to be a Marine, by the way.
She does. There you go.
I say go in as an officer, don't go in as an enlisted.
It's funny you say that, because that's, that's the conversation my, my wife and I have with our kids. It's like, sure, you can do whatever you want, but you're gonna go to school first.
Go to school first.
Because it's a total different lifestyle when you're an officer compared to an enlisted.
We learned the hard way, huh? So we learned the hard way so we could tell our kids what the easy way is. Because nobody told us!
That's part of life, that's part of life though, is that you are, you, you, my parents struggled to get me to a point in life where I struggled to get my kids through a point in life and then just build upon that so they have something better than I had and my parents...
Generation, they're supposed to teach going all the way down to better and better way to do things.
And you know, and I jest about the college and stuff like that. All I ever ask of my kids, and they, ask of them, they're eight years old, I have twin boys, but...
Could you tell them a part?
Ah, yeah, I can, they're fraternal, like...
Okay, they're not identical?
No, they're not. Initially, people had a difficult time, but, but now they have distinct personality differences and now height and height differences, yeah, so.
Identical twins, they, they just have it, man.
Yeah, they can, they can, yeah.
They could really mess somebody up.
I dread saying this, but my kids haven't figured it out. Being twins, they're really connected. But they haven't figured out yet that if they, one sacrifices themselves for the other, I'm only gonna catch one of them. Because right now, they still run together and I can catch them both. But one of these days, they're gonna figure out, if I split up, dad's only gonna be able to catch one of us and the other one's gonna get away.
I know identical twin girl, this is a few years back, switched boyfriends just to...
Wow, that's quite the experiment.
They didn't know!
So the boys didn't know?
No!
Oh, then I'd have dumped them. You gotta move on from that.
See, you can't tell!
You gotta move on from that.
Spoken like a true Marine.
Yeah, so enlisted in the Marine Corps, stationed in Yuma, Arizona, just south of here and spent a year...
I love Yuma.
It's a great place.
Yes, it is.
Hottest place on the planet.
Yes.
But it is, you know, it's a good town.
I had fun there. I'm not gonna tell what type of fun.
I was an academic, so I didn't have... And then spent a year in Japan.
Okay, what part?
Iwakuni, so I was a Marine Corps stationed Iwakuni, so about 30 kilometers south of Hiroshima.
Okay.
So Osaka, then south of Osaka.
Okay, I was in Okinawa.
Okay, so you were on the island, south, yeah, south of the main island of Japan, so. So yeah, and we're gonna actually go back. 20 years later, I'll be back in Hiroshima.
Oh really?
Take my kids.
You just wanted to show them?
Well, so anytime I travel to a foreign country, my wife and I love to travel and we love to expose our kids to different cultures.
How many foreign countries have you traveled as a civilian?
20, 25.
Really, as a civilian?
Yeah, I've been from Tromso, Norway, down to Cape Town, South Africa.
Were you retired or what, what's going on?
No, it's just my wife has a plan and she loves to travel and we gotta go.
You got travel money?
My wife is able to do the most amazing things.
What does wifey do?
I don't know. She just, she just says, we're gonna go do this and we go do it.
What does she do for occupation?
She is a, she runs a, manages grants for, I gotta get this right because she, she...
She's watching?
Yes, she is. She said she's gonna watch it streaming, is that people who are experiencing homelessness. So she runs grant programs for providers and manages their grants and issues them out for people that are experiencing homelessness.
Got you. That's a very noble cause.
It is, and she's, she's...
And a lot of vets are homeless, unfortunately.
Yeah, and it's one thing that, you know, we watch for in my current occupation are vets that are homeless. Because it's kind of, you personalize that, right? It's, you know, you can, you can draw a tie to that, draw a tie to them and, and the sacrifices they made and that they're homeless is kind of a tragedy.
You know what, I used to, I used to love travel. And then when I got out the military, I developed so many phobias. It's like incredible, one of them is traveling and the other one is camping. I don't know why.
Really?
Yeah, I just don't know, I just, just, I used to love doing it. And then when I came out the Marine Corps, I just don't want to do it anymore. Is it old age or is it just me being just, is something crossed in my, my brain? I don't know what. And I try to push myself sometimes, I really do, and it just, it just doesn't work.
Wow, and that to me is, you know...
I'd rather stay home and watch Hulu!
I didn't start wanting to travel until I got married. You know, I, there's no, you know, there's really no need to. And then my wife and I, you know, honeymooned in Jamaica and then...
Going there in July.
Then went to Christmas, oh yeah, really, it's a beautiful country.
Oh yeah.
And then spent Christmas in Italy, Rome, Florence and...
See, he's living the dream, man.
And from that moment on, he just kind of, we kind of got this bug.
Life is so doggone short, right?
Yeah, and to experience, there's so much more out there.
You know what I used to tell my kids? I used to tell my kids this, my two boys. I raised, I raised one of my sons from 10 to, well, fully like living with me, from 10 to 18 and the other one from 13 to 18. And I used to tell them, I'm like, why are you so, so hooked? You know, upset about this one woman, one female? Why are you so upset about this one female? I said, there's nine billion people on this planet. 70, 65% of them are women. And I said, Vegas has 40 million people that come here every single year as a tourist. And then we have another, what, 2.5 at that time? 2.5 million people that actually live here. Move on! Right, move on, get somebody else!
And how many times you have that conversation with your young Marines, right? While you're on actual duty, it's like, you know, you're, you're in a foreign country, they're not. And then you get a letter or you get this, this moment, you know? I remember one specifically, it was in Japan and Lance Corporal Burns, I'll never forget him because, because of this moment, it was, his girlfriend, he saw on the internet, was protesting our military activities in the Middle East. And he goes, why is she doing that? I just don't get it. And I said, I said, Burns, I said, you realize what you're doing here. And he said, what Sergeant? I said, you are protecting her freedom to do that. Keep that in the back of your mind and everything is gonna be okay. What she is doing is exercising her right. Doesn't make a lot of sense, but we don't get to make that decision. We don't get to dictate what other people get to say or do. That's one of our constitutional guarantees. And he kind of cocked his head a little bit and felt a little bit more at ease with it. So it was just kind of a monumental moment that, you know, got to, got to redirect his mindset going, look at things a little bit differently. Don't focus on that. And then in the end, what do we always say? There's a million other fish in the sea.
That's true.
A million other fish in the sea.
But people just don't get that out their mindset for some reason.
It's tough, it's tough, tough, tough.
So are we, are we done with your?
The bio? I only got to college, I'm in the league.
Oh my God, keep going, man!
I haven't got to Vegas yet!
Keep going.
So in 2005, moved to Las Vegas, joined the Metropolitan Police Department.
You were a police officer?
I am a police officer.
Right now?
Yes.
For Metro?
No.
For Henderson?
I'm a commander for Boulder City Police Department. Yeah, I'm a police commander for Boulder City Police Department.
When did that happen?
Two years ago, I got promoted.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're familiar with the past chiefs?
Yes.
There was Thomas, what's his name?
Tom Finn.
Tom Finn and prior to him was...
I wasn't there prior to him.
There was an LVMPD police officer that retired.
Chief Conger.
Connor, that was my buddy.
I love him.
Conger.
I loved him.
Conger, that was my buddy.
Absolutely loved him.
Tom Finn and I didn't really get along, but me and Conger did.
Yeah, 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 fantastic guy. And you know, talking to him and hearing his stories about, you know, being a pilot in Vietnam, because you know, flew Cobras in Vietnam. And it just, you know, just going through that and just, yeah, remarkable man.
But you live in Henderson?
I live in Henderson, I live in Ward. Dollars go a little bit further in Henderson than they do in Boulder City. Boulder City is pretty proud of their property, their real estate there. So when I was, you know, I was young, I didn't, wasn't making a lot of money. And so when I found, in 2011, the price of homes were pretty, still pretty low and found this home that just got, you know, remodeled after foreclosure and got a VA loan and it is history. I am in that house.
You know what, Mr. Johnson, you're easy to talk to. There's not that many people that I could really, I really like standoffish a little bit, but you're, you're just easy to talk to for some reason.
I like talking to people.
Yeah, you'll make a great politician.
As long as I can maintain my integrity, I'll be a great politician. That's the whole...
So, so we're in Vegas now in 05?
Yeah, 05, 06, I joined the Boulder City Police Department and then just moved through the ranks. And 2012, I married my beautiful bride.
And her name?
Shelley, Michelle. And then 2014...
Got a pet name for her?
Shelley. I dare not.
Not on air!
So, yeah, 2014, we have our, had our twin boys and then we're just loving life and, and moving on to the next adventure, you know? And this is it. And this is kind of, what's interesting is that in 2019, it was about the time where I was like, I think I really kind of want to run for city council in Henderson, but it was, I didn't understand the pathway, I didn't understand what was going on and then just kind of let it go and subsided. And then, well, once I was nudged again by some friends that, hey, there's gonna be a vacancy in your ward. We think you'd make a good candidate. I went to my employer, said, is this legal? Can I do this? And they said, there's absolutely no conflict of interest, no ethics issue.
So you could be a cop in Boulder and, and a councilman in Henderson?
The only concern they had is that they thought it was full-time. And I said, it's not, no, it's part-time.
And you know, in election, you run citywide.
Well, no, they just, they just passed that legislation.
When did that happen?
They just, this last, this last election, it was a ballot measure.
Yeah, I was gonna ask the exact same question.
Really?
It's a new ballot manager, only the people in...
Carrie Cox, you hear that?
Yes, 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 yeah.
You got the reelection in the bag!
I was gonna say, you preempted me on, that was the first question I was gonna ask. I'm like, why shouldn't this be changed? It makes no sense.
Yeah, we, we've been talking about that for years. Why they run a city, a citywide when they're, when they're actually a council for a specific ward in Las Vegas and North Las Vegas have it that way? How come Henderson don't?
So they, they put it on the ballot this time around.
Supposed to be the happiest, happiest community in the world.
So is that effective right now for your reelection?
Yes, they were, yeah.
I mean, not reelection, but your reelection.
The moment was voted, the city adopted it and then, so it will be for, if the council, now that's the kicker though. On, on January 3rd, the new council has to vote whether or not they're gonna do a special election. They could appoint. I think they would disappoint a lot of people, but because like you said...
Do you know the other names that are up for grabs?
Yeah, there's Sheriff Seabock, Jim Seabock is one of them. Yeah, there's a Sheriff Seabock, uh Jim Seabock is one of them. He's a metro sheriff, assistant sheriff for uh will assume to be for uh Sheriff McMahill.
Okay.
Ally uh uh Nil- Nelson, um she's married to a retired metro uh Henderson cop, Josh, and then um Melissa Woodbury, throwing her name in the hat, and then um a gentleman named Alex, and I can't recall his last name off the top of my head. But um I think I think that's really the handful that I've um kind of known right now. Uh, no idea what's gonna happen if they announce a special election.
Sounds like a lot of police officers want to be in politics.
Right now, it's kind of, it's well, it's it's an anomaly right now. There aren't, there aren't.
Have you not noticed that, especially in this last election? You got Star Rose Anthony, cop, lieutenant governor. You got Joe Lombardo, cop.
Yep.
Governor, you got Brian Hibberts, cop. Um, 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 Assemblyman. What's going on? Would cops want to be in politics?
I think I think that's. I I don't I don't know. I don't know why. It's 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 it seems like a.
The thing to do?
A thing to do. I mean, and generally, I like to think I have a lot of integrity to begin with. It's demanded in my occupation.
Right.
Um transparency is is demanded. That's one of the things I want to make sure happens in our city council is to have a transparent government. Um, I have to be transparent in my occupation. It would it would translate easily over into my political world.
Well, I think that a lot of the reason why cops now want to be involved in politics, especially at that level, when you start talking about governor, lieutenant governor, city council races, is it's like, all right, we want to have some type of control over the budgeting. Cause we've never really had control over the budgeting before. That all gets passed by politicians and then we have to live with it. Uh, in a leadership position with the police department. Now, we we understand the struggles that are occurring by that happening. Now, we want to take that to the next level and be able to control some of the budgeting.
Yeah, or at least have input into it, you know, have have substantial input into it. Um, uh, and and into the entire process, into the legislative process, like you brought up the the um the bill that is gonna take place in on October uh.
January one.
You got me saying October. I know it's gonna.
Some laws, some laws do do.
They've already happened, yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, then some laws already have changed earlier on in that, but um, yeah, so January one, it changes civil infraction for most traffic offenses, not uh not all traffic offenses.
Not not DUIs.
Yeah, or there's still some other anomalies that you're seeing, like um uh, I'll give you an example. No proof of insurance is still a a citation, reckless driving, some of the things that are excessive are still. Um, but uh, you know, to to and and it the the opinion across the board is varying in my profession on on how this is gonna balance out.
And what's the opinion?
Well, it it varies. Personally, I my opinion is I have a job to do and I have to lead this in that this is what the large legislator said is gonna we're gonna do and that's what we're gonna do. And I gotta lead that. That's my that is what I have to do. Um, uh, and others are like, well, you know, why am I gonna put my life on a line for a civil infraction? I say, because you have an obligation to do this. You have an obligation to the community. Your community wants this. It doesn't change anything. So so do you know, and and so that's, you know, that's that's gonna be one of the struggles is leading this down to the down to the line going, you know, you're you are valuable. You are valuable every single day. This doesn't change simply because they want to make it a civil infraction. Because you really have to look at it, as like you said. And and I think the courts uh struggle with this concept too, because of um they have they have some monetary ties into um into fines and things like that to run the courts.
Right.
That are um and that uh when it becomes a civil infraction, they uh there's there's less teeth in it and um people have the opportunity to walk away and then you have to sue them essentially for some of them. But that's gonna work itself out. I mean, it's not, there's other states in the nation doing it every single day, all day long. Ever, you know, we just happen to still have criminalized traffic offenses. So we'll see.
What's your personal opinion on that, by the way?
Oh, I've always felt driving is a social issue to begin with. I am in I am in a social contract with you as I'm driving down the road that I am not gonna cross over that line and you're not gonna cross the line. That's really a social contract, because there's nothing stopping me from going to do it.
It's true.
Laws all day long. It's really a social, it's a real social contract.
Cause there is crazies out there.
There are crazies out there that do that. That's what we have now, bollards all along, you know, Las Vegas Boulevard because of crazies, right?
So it's the last crazy.
Yeah, right. Yeah, so long time overdue on those, in my opinion, but.
Yeah, it it costs a lot of money. Money's always an object. It always gets in the way of things.
Yep. But then then you start, you know, putting the value on it, you know, um.
Life versus the dollar, right?
Right, right, so, so, yep.
So um Mr. Johnson, are we done with the bio?
Yes, yeah, let's finish the bio. That's a long bio, sorry.
No, I enjoyed it.
Well, yeah, no, no, exactly. Like, we we wouldn't we wouldn't get in that. I would have interrupted Steve if I wasn't enjoying it.
Yeah, I would ask you how cold it is in Alaska right now. How do you deal with the? How you deal with the what, six months of sun and 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 no no night and and vice versa? How do you how do you even handle that? That that sounds like a different planet.
It is, but it's remember, it's not a light switch. So summer doesn't happen and then happen all of a sudden and the light switch goes on and it's dark.
But but how could you deal with that, though? It's twenty-four hours a day, you you sunny outside?
The light is not the problem. It's actually the dark that really.
That's probably depression as hell.
Depression kicks in, uh that vitamin D isn't soaring through your bodies.
I would think it's a party all all day long.
Well, there there have been times where I've I've uh watched the sunrise and said, all in a good evening. Before the cows came home.
So, so, Mr. Johnson, why do you why do you wanna become a Henderson city councilor?
So fundamentally, and then the initially, the reason why is is for public safety. I was really, really watching some of the struggles that um my colleagues in at the Henderson Police Department and then some of the issues that you come to light even with the fire department and and some of the things I remember kind of being promised as I moved into Henderson that there would be a fire department right across the street from me. And that was twelve years ago. I mean, where's the fire department? Yet we can build two hockey arenas, but we can't build a fire department? So, you know, those are those are the struggles for me and and in my ward and 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 that was the initial one. And then you start looking at some of the other things, you know, that I've always been a fan of breaking up the school district. This Clark County School District is massive and totally, totally, totally out of control. We're we're suffering.
Jaro probably upset about that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm sure he is. I'm but.
Making what, three, four hundred thousand dollars a year, something like that?
He bought into the problem. I mean, I mean, he bought into the problem, you know, and he can be part of the solution. I think they are trying their darndest to to do it and keeping it intact. I think they've given more control to the principals at local high schools to to manage their campus the way they see fit. But still, you have a centralized, you know, that that centralized school system, the centralized government that that tries to make one mold fit every application. And it doesn't work. It fails. It fails miserably. And it has failed miserably. And you can see it for the past thirty years. It's it's failed miserably, so.
Do you remember Mike Mayberry?
Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, okay.
I don't think he likes some of our endorsements, but anyways, it was my but we endorsed him. It was a long time ago, huh, Jim?
Yeah.
But um, you know, you know, um, the Henderson city police chief is an appointed position. And it's pointed by the Henderson City Council. It's not like, you know, you know, LVMPD is is a is elected sheriff. They haven't been able to keep a police chief in there for without some type of controversy going on since a while. And um the last police chief, um I believe they were doing a vote of no confidence.
So the current chief chief Andres, uh they did have voted no confidence on him. I'll be I'll be honest with you. I'll tell it all my friends in Henderson right now. I don't buy into votes of no confidence. It's not my prerogative. That is, that's not what I'm there to do. Uh, I don't buy into them. Um, I I think they're, I think they're counterproductive in some senses, uh but alarm- alarmingly, when ninety-five percent of your officers say, I just not seeing it, I cannot, I have no confidence in you anymore. That's telling. That's telling. Um, I've never.
Crime is up in Henderson?
It really is.
Although they try to say it's not, but it really is.
So so there's there's that whitewashing of it and this, you know, kind of kind of softening it down and that we're, you know, the second safest city in this in the nation our size. And I like to point out that actually Boulder City is the safest city in the nation, not Henderson, but that's just a little rub at them, but the 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 reality.
It is the safest city.
It really is.
It's not Henderson. It is Boulder City.
It really, really is.
You you guys, you guys have a restriction on growth.
Yep, yep.
Okay, you 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 have no gambling, um, um, shit. The bars are shut down like at, I don't know, at ten, eleven, that's pushing it?
There's restaurants that close at two o'clock.
I mean, you don't have no tourism there. I mean, you have no dispensaries.
Yep.
How pathetic. But anyways, um, you have no grow farms, you know, uh so so, yeah, it has to be the safest city.
And 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 that's actually.
You got nothing to upset the apple cart.
You know, and and I've often said, you know, my responsibility as a patrol officer is just to repel whatever comes over that hill back into Henderson. That's really.
That's what you do. You you had, you you guys had one incident that I could remember. And this is this is when Tom Finn was the chief, is when the bikers came there and 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 had a zero tolerance, which I thought that was discriminatory, because if you have a zero, you can't just have a zero tolerance for one class of people and not have it for everybody. If you're gonna have a zero tolerance, it should be all the way around.
Zero tolerance.
For everybody.
But it wasn't a zero tolerance. They they did come into town. They did have their party. They did. They go. Um, um, we didn't make them take their their colors off or any of that stuff, but they're.
Well, cause if you did, then you couldn't identify.
I I imagine we could figure it out. So uh, but uh, it's 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 the same, it's the same with anything. And so we had that, we've had the Mongols there, the Magos are there. The Hells Angels wanted to throw in two thousand and twenty, but COVID kind of crushed that. Wanted to have their national conference there. And it's funny, but we just, you know, we we have great partnerships with all the, even though we're small, and I think that's what attracts.
Well, veterans of politics defended them in a city council meeting that when Roger Tubler was the Tubler was the mayor. We defended them and and it it worked out in their favor.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Tom Finn was removed.
From the?
From from being the chief?
Yeah, that was, yeah.
That was part of it.
Oh, okay.
That was part of the whole thing.
Yeah, I don't.
I don't know if you know all the details.
I don't, cause I know, I don't get.
That was all political stuff.
My boss is, you know.
Yeah, I was I was up there for that. Those are some years ago, though. Yeah.
All right. Yes, I mean, but it's it's we do have a, we we will enforce the laws, we will enforce the regulations. And if you abide by them, we're fine with it. But if you think you're gonna go screeching down the street doing donuts in the middle of it, that's just not gonna happen.
But do you believe, do you believe there's a is a zero tolerance for everybody, not just certain classes of people? You say zero tolerance.
There should be, yeah, right.
It should be for everybody across the board.
For everybody across the board, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so let's get back to Henderson, because you guys are so close, Henderson, Boulder.
Yeah, my ward sits right up to my city, so it's kind of kind of a neat relationship that could be could be developed.
Um, um, what's what's going on with the crime that's in Henderson? As a city council person, how how are you gonna alleviate crime?
To to get back into the proactive policing, you go talk to some of the cops. Talk to the cops. Why is crime on the suit? Cause we're afraid. We're we're afraid we're not gonna be supported by our arrests. We're 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 concerned about what we're doing. So the proactivity, when the proactivity is down, especially with this new use of force policy that came out was alarming, uh that that.
What's the, tell us about the new use of force policy?
It's been, it's been repealed. I haven't read it in its entirety, but the gist of it is, is that uh order for um any type of application of force, you must meet some sort of, you know, criteria. And it's not clear. It wasn't clear. And so and to try and retrain that, um, it would it would be a daunting task to sit there and retrain that. And then it takes away safety. It really, really, really does take away safety.
I heard there's not enough police officers per capita per the population, it's there.
I don't believe in a per capita. I don't believe in a per capita. And I've told this to Henderson.
What do you believe in?
I believe in uh um I believe in in sufficient presence
Okay.
um to manage not just crime, but manage the services needed to the city.
What about timing for a police response?
Sure, you so that takes into account what it is. So so if you have, so go back to this this per capita thing, one officer per thousand. Okay, so you one officer per thousand, but you're so in my ward, which has, you know, fifty thousand people in Ward one. And then you go to Ward three, which has a higher density population, or you go to Ward uh two, which has a higher density population, or you're gonna, then you what you're saying by the cops per thousand, then all those cops need to be in Ward three. All those cops need to, you know, less cops in Ward one, more cops in Ward three because of population density. I give it a more, I give it a more broad thing. Uh, Wyoming, a small county in Wyoming, do you think they need one cop per thousand? No, they probably need five cops per thousand because they gotta get a job done. And you can't do it with one cop. So but in uh, but 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 you get you get to a point. So the the whole cops per thousand thing, I just kind of dismiss it and throw it out. You need you need to have effective policing. And it's not necessarily effective policing. You have to have effective uh um involvement with the community, that collaboration, so that when things happen. And 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 if if you have an officer go from call to call to call to call to call and isn't is unable to get out of their car and go maybe back some groceries at the grocery store and meet people and get develop that relationship. Some of the things that, you know, I'll I'll give accolades to Sheriff McMahill, Sheriff Larkin. Um, you know, some of the things they did with the community development programs, they did that community outreach program that they did was that, you know, you get out there and you meet the community, um rather than sit there and just always having to enforce something. It's okay to go out there and throw a football with a kid in in the middle of the street or 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 play basketball with him or something like that. So you're developing this relationship. So by not having enough people to do that, all you're doing is reacting. You're not being proactive. So when you get to a point, you need enough cops in your department to be able to be proactive in your community and have develop a relationship in a collaborative effort to to uh identify problems, because you're not everywhere. But everybody else is. So to have that neighborhood, you know, Neighborhood Watch is a good example, right? You had a group of people watching out for the neighborhood um and and would notify when something suspicious happened. So.
But let me ask you this. I I really like the direction you're going. And I and I've heard this discussion before, but here's the thing. When you're funded by the government and it it whether it's being funded by the government or being funded by a business, uh, so when you start talking about interactive policing, but how do you budget that? How do you measure that? Like, how can you set up a budget for that? So if there is a police officer that wants to, you know, be involved with the community and go catch a football, but how do you how do you budget that? I mean, because that's that's the thing. Logistically, it sounds good. But logistically, it's a nightmare when you're a government-funded agency. Like, where does the funding come from? How do you measure it?
Right.
And what what are the taxpayers on the hook for?
Right, so we don't do well what firefighters do well, and they monitor and are very, very data-driven. We've gotten better at it over time, but they crunch and mine data on a daily basis to show how long it takes for them to get out of that recliner, into their gear, into an apparatus, and get someplace. And then even scrutinized even more, how long did it take to get from the call, from the dispatcher to us, so we could get out the door? So that they have this timeline. And when they sit there and say, this is our standard. What we don't have in policing is that standard. So there is no national standard that is really, really measurable, because um other than crime statistics, right? And unless you're, you know, Boulder City, we're we're a small agency, so uh our poor records folks are inundated with trying to do some crime mapping and and uh getting these uh what they they're they're called NIBR, NIBR's uh uh events now, not uh, what were they are, what were they called before? Crime statistics that you report to the FBI and then they publish this document saying this is the crime rate in Boulder City and this is the crime rate in Henderson and and so on and so forth. Um, but the the issue is, is that what is a burglary in Nevada is not a burglary in New York City. What is a battery in Nevada is not a battery in Louisiana. So when you're trying to report this information to a central repository, the FBI, you're getting conflicting information, so you really don't know. So what we have to do is is mine that data locally and find out something that is uh meaningful to the community and sit there and say, because it's if 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 we're talking about Henderson and what is good for Henderson, then that information should be pushed out to the Henderson population, saying, this is the true data. This is what we need. And and I I really think uh the Henderson Police Department has done a good job at that because they are asking for more. They have been given more. Uh, we're just in a stage in in recruitment that is is not very popular to be a police officer right now. So it's very difficult to recruit.
So if you were to become um the next um councilman for Ward one, what boards would you like to sit on and what?
What board?
Boards.
I haven't, I haven't even broached down that rep out. I I'm telling, my political aspirations.
Fiscal affairs, um, 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 the Las Vegas Business Authority, the Water Board, which I thought I was gonna get somebody, Jim, for the water, and it's taken a.
So because I am a boater on Lake Mead, it's always been one of the one of the things that I would like to do is 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 go uh and get some discussions from the Water Authority and 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 do that. So I don't know what will be available. I will be the last person, so I don't know what's gonna be left, is essentially what.
The bottom of the deal. But but um growth and water, do you do you do you think that there's enough water to sustain growth?
There is enough water.
There is. And what do you say?
Our issue is not.
Because everybody's telling me, this is this is what I'm, this is what I'm getting, Mr. Johnson. You know, they they come up with all these commercials and they show how the water is going down, down and down. And you got all this white stuff going on that used to be where the water was and 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 they find it bodies and bodies and all this craziness. We, everybody knew bodies were there. I knew it was a ma- matter of time. And and then you 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 walk out your house and you see all this growth going up.
Mm-hmm.
All these houses, all these lands being sold, bulldozers leveling leveling everything out. And I'm saying, what's going on?
So I'm I'm not quite sure.
Do we have a drought or don't we?
I'm not quite sure we're getting the 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 true information. I that's something that.
But the water is going down.
It is going down, but why?
And where are they getting the water from?
But why is it going down, is the question?
Because we don't have rain?
No.
Why?
Have you watched how, go Google Earth, the Imperial Valley in California, and watch how it has gone like this? Grown. They're growing food and alfalfa and 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 crops in the middle of the desert, where water never existed before.
Okay.
So it's not necessarily Las Vegas that is causing the drain on the lake. It is the use of water in the Imperial Valley in California. Is that's that's what's draining, that's what's draining the lake, not our usage.
So.
They, they.
The lake is disappearing.
It is disappearing.
Were they gonna build homes there next?
Well, I, I.
Right next to Hoover Dam.
I, I, I would love to sit there and talk to someone from the Southern Nevada Water Authority and say, start buying land in the Imperial Valley and don't grow anything. Take those water allotments back. Do you wanna save that lake? Stop growing alfalfa, alfalfa in the Imperial Valley.
I wanna buy land around Lake Mead because I think that whole is gonna be some development or some community is gonna be developed.
There is a small community down in there, but, uh, yeah, I, I don't, I don't. The, the solution to that is not restricting growth in Las Vegas. The solution to that is restricting growth in California. And that's it. There's, 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 you know, we got the Colorado River, River Compact, uh, between Colorado, Arizona, Nevada, California, and Mexico. All get a portion of that water that comes out of that. And we have the smallest portion of it, and we don't use a fraction of our allotment. It goes to California, it goes to Phoenix.
Why is California getting all of the water?
Because I think that's what the lake was originally made for.
Really?
Yeah.
For California?
As reservoir for.
Is that why they're all pouring into, um, Vegas?
I don't think so. I think they're seeing, I think they're pouring into Vegas because they're seeing it's something a little bit better. Unfortunately, I think they're gonna vote the same way they voted in California.
Yeah. So, so.
We're all on the same page on that one.
So being on the council, what, what, what are your main objectives? What do you, what do you want to change? What do you, what do you want to change, or what do you want to implement? What, what's your vision?
The, the vision is, is true transparency through teamwork and, you know, effective leadership in there, and I think that's really one of the things that has happened. Earlier, I told you, I don't, they haven't had, they've had elections, but I think Mayor Romero,
He's a brand new mayor.
Brand new mayor in, in January, and Carrie Cox. Deborah Marsh was originally appointed. I think Dan Shaw was originally appointed. Um, um, what, what's the, is it Steve? Who's, who's the other council member? I think we're originally appointed. That whole council was originally appointed rather than elected by the masses. So you, you, you wonder what their politics are, where they're going. It's like a good old boys' club, and that's one of the things I wanna change, is to get out there and then, um, and be transparent, be honest. I mean, goodness gracious. How hard is it to say that crime is up? It, what is, that's not a difficult conversation to have. It is, it's reality, but let's fix it.
Crime is up.
Let's fix it.
I mean, that was, that was Carrie Cox's on platform when she was running for council. Uh, if they do go to a, um, special election, what, what we're gonna do is, um, get everybody together and, and, and have a forum and see who'd we, who'd we endorse.
Okay.
And I think that'd be fun. I will do it up in Henderson like we did with, um, when Sam Bateman became a judge up there.
I'm giving everybody all my talking points.
No, you're fine, you're fine. I mean, we, we encourage, we encourage other candidates to come on the show.
Okay, yeah.
But, but you, 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 you were brave enough to do so. There, there's a lot of people that don't want to come on the show because they don't know what type of questions we're gonna ask. There, there's a, many times we do our due diligence and we do background checks on, on candidates, stuff that they buried years ago, and all of a sudden it's right here.
Oh, wow. Wow.
So.
What'd you find?
Sometimes I like to come on the show, uh, without knowing anything about, about a candidate.
All right.
You know, because I, I don't sit on the endorsement panel, they, they, they won't let me.
Okay.
Yeah. They think I'm too close to candidates.
Too close to candidates and develop that bias.
I, I, my next question for you though, is it, it's, it's a pretty simple question, but, um, everybody, uh, a lot of people get confused on when you say you're running for city council in Henderson Ward One, like what area of Henderson does that encompass?
Okay, so if you take, if you take, uh, the ninety-five at Lake Mead and go south, that's it. And then right around College, you deep dip into some of those other, what I call the rural portions of Henderson. Um, and, and, but fundamentally, it is, it is, uh, um, ninety-five, two fifteen-ish, and Lake Mead, and it just pushes out there.
Do you know Earl Mitchell?
Ah.
Former constable.
Earl, yeah, I've met Earl. I've met Earl on, on one occasion. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just checking. He used to be a buddy of mine.
Yeah.
Doesn't call anymore ever since he got kicked off.
Uh-oh.
A, a lot of people try to stay away from veterans in politics when they know something bad's gonna happen with them.
Oh, really? Because they don't want to get the tough questions then? Yeah?
For some reason. But, um, do you, do you, Mr. Johnson, do you have any relationship with any of the current council members up there?
No, I, I.
Working relationship?
I don't know, I've, I've met Carrie Cox on, on.
On the campaign trail?
On, on, on a couple of occasions. No, post, post her election, just, just recently, I, I, I've had the opportunity to meet her, her, um, talk to her about her ideas. I like the direction that she's going, and, and I think we'd make a great team, her and I, and, um, uh, and, um, but everybody else I have never, I've never met.
Is your wife on board with this?
Yeah, I could not do this without her.
How about your two boys?
Yeah, they seem to be really engaged and wanna have fun. I'm not quite sure they understand what's going on. I think they think I'm at some business meeting or work meeting right now, and, uh, but, uh.
Is, is growth the problem in, in Henderson? Do you have, um, anywhere to grow? Because you know, like, for example, Las Vegas wards one through five, they, they have nowhere to grow.
Yes.
So everything is pushed into the Northwest in Ward Six.
Right.
Because that's the only place they have to grow is Ward Six.
So Henderson is annexed, the, the south side of Railroad Pass there now. So it really all extends even further and, and marries up to Boulder City down into El Dorado Valley. And so, uh, once they're done mining, I imagine they're gonna turn all that into development, real estate for homes and stuff like that. So, so Ward One does have, uh, room for growth. Um, I like to, you know, head down the path. We need to have responsible growth. And it goes back to water consumption, and it goes back to infrastructure, it goes back to services, um, that, uh, you know, are, are, a massive growth takes away from services, and unless we can keep up with those services, then, then, you know, things, things begin to, begin to suffer.
How about federal or tribal lands? Do you have any of that over there?
No, not in Boulder City.
No.
Not, not, not in Henderson, not, no, not, not, not in our ward.
Okay.
Not to my knowledge.
So you got a green light to grow. Is vacant lands?
Yeah, well, BLM, uh, has, uh, the land south of Henderson into the valley there, and then it, but Boulder City has, is, is the largest city in the state of Nevada. It's two hundred and five square miles of land. It goes from Railroad Pass.
Boulder City could grow.
It could grow if they wanted to. No, they don't wanna.
They just wanna keep out the rick wraps, they say.
They, they, they do not wanna grow. They, yeah, as a matter of fact, as a matter.
I tried to get Roger Tubler, the former mayor, to, to, you know, extend that, that growth ordinance, and no, no, we don't, we don't, we don't want, we don't want nobody here.
And, and in reality, not only do they have enough, no growth ordinance, they have a plan that's centralized growth, is that they will only grow from the city out, so they will not have, as long as they keep with their plan, have an outcrop of something, you know, further south. Everything just is gonna grow out like that.
That's a lot of campaigning to go all, drive all over.
There's a lot, right, yeah. So, but yeah, that's, uh, it's, it's, and it seemed to work. Um, we didn't have an issue, uh, with a downturn in the economy because of some of the investments they did in the solar lease fields that we have. Uh, seems to be a better, uh, use of the land than, uh, homes in, in the council's mind.
Or is there any questions, uh, you wanna address, or, I mean, is, is anything you wanna say before we end the show? Did we cover everything that you wanted to cover?
Your show, I was here just to.
I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Guests have their own agenda too when they come on.
Well, that's what people ask me, so what are you gonna do? What's your agenda? I said, I really don't have an agenda. My, my, my thought process was is, again, I just wanna have, you know, I'm in an occupation of service.
Okay.
I was in the Marine Corps for service. I, you know, and so I, I, this is just another level of service to a, to a community, to a group of people that in my mind needs a voice, and they have not had a voice for a long time. It's just been, been out there and appointed, you know.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Jim, you have anything else from Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I, I have one last question. So, uh, city council races are nonpartisan, and I'll not do my normal cliche on this one, but I love city council. It's my favorite form.
Where the rubber meets the road.
Yeah, it's deep. Um, so just one, one quick thing. Do you honestly think there should be, um, such thing as nonpartisan races? It's a, because, and let me explain real quick, and the reason why, and like, you can just not answer it if you don't want to, because I understand it's a nonpartisan seat you're running for. But here's the thing that's always kind of frustrated me. I'm like, there's really, unfortunately, in today's political climate, there's really no such thing as a nonpartisan race. I mean, basically, everybody already knows, okay, you lean Republican, you lean Democrat, or whatever.
You're asked.
Yeah.
You're flat out asked.
Even some judges voluntarily, voluntarily add information which is against the code of ethics. Go figure.
Yeah.
So what, now, what do you think about that? Do you think everything, because here's my opinion, and it's, tell me where you think I'm wrong on this. And I just want your opinion. I honestly think either all races should be nonpartisan, or all races should be partisan. One way or the other.
Yeah, but.
Even at that.
And then I, I would have to agree with you is that it, it, it's not, it's, it's nonpartisan by definition, but everybody knows the direction you're going. Um, I don't, so I, I'm asked all the time, so what are you, Republican or Democrat?
Right, yeah.
Right, you, you're asked that, and, 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 and you answer, and you answer truthfully, and you move on, but.
I don't like asking that question because I, I, I like to, I like to look at the, um, the quality of the person.
I think that's the benefit of a nonpartisan race, is because you can sit there and, and look at it, and then you can, you know, you have meetings with the Democrat Party, you have meetings with the Republican Party. And, and, you know, you get to sell yourself and your ideas to a group of people that their, your opinions might differ. What's wrong with that? So I, I think that is the one benefit of having a nonpartisan race, is that you don't know, and you can learn. Uh, rather than having the stigma going, um, down a ballot going, R, 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 you know, you know.
That's for people that don't know how to think themselves.
Think themselves, right, so that I think.
Or radical.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I call them. Either they have no brain or they're radical.
Yeah.
Because I, I don't, I don't, I don't do that.
I don't imagine you do.
I do it per person.
Yeah, it would, I, 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 I.
There's some people in different political parties that are my political party I cannot stand.
I had that discussion earlier today.
I, I, as you were, what, what were you saying? Sorry?
I was, it was, so I, I said, I, I don't, I'd venture to say you are well, well-versed on who you're voting for.
I, I try, I try to be. I try to be well-versed. They said it's, it's, it's more than the norm. But, um, I, I like to know, because giving my vote to somebody or, or our endorsement, or, or just to say I support this individual, to me, it's, 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 it's a gift of love. You know, because you're saying to everybody that this person not only can do the job, is, is responsible, respectful, humble, knowledgeable, you know, that's what you're telling people. So you're telling people, come on, let's vote for this person because I'm with this person all the way. But then when, but then when we vote, when we endorse somebody and they end up screwing up, then we go after them with a vengeance.
Well, then, and, and if they screw up, they should come back and take accountability.
With a vengeance.
Yeah.
Ask some of these family court judges, with a vengeance. With a vengeance, because we, we gave you our love and, and you betrayed it.
Yeah.
You know, and, and we, we, we told the people that you're, you are the person that's the betterment of, of, of whatever office you're running for, for, and then you come out and, and you, you, you do all this to the people that, that's not in, 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 in the justice of law, you know, and, and it just, it's sad. Especially judges. I hold judges to a more higher standard than, than I'll hold our own governor of the state of Nevada, because judges impact your life immediately on a very, very personal level.
Sure, yeah.
You know, a governor probably take a year or six months or whatever to get to you, whatever, you know. And it's not so personal.
Right.
But some people take it personal.
Right, right.
But when you take away somebody's kids and money and housing and lock them up and their freedom, that's, that's extremely impersonal to that person, right? So, you know, that's, that's just how I look at it.
You know, I really, I really like that message because it's, it's, that is gonna be one of the difficult things about this campaign, is in ninety days, I have to convince some people to vote for me, that I am their, the best candidate. More importantly, is at least to get out and vote. You know, get out there and express your opinion and say, this is my candidate and this is who I'm supporting. And that's the importance of this, but, um, with a special election, you're gonna see, or especially right after a midterm election, you're gonna, you're gonna see a very small percentage of the population even get up and go out and vote.
They're lazy.
Yeah.
But they, they're the biggest complainers. You know, one, one of the things a city council does is to, um, appoint, uh, judges in the municipal for vacancies. What, what would you look for in, in a, in a candidate before you that, that you're filling a vacancy for judicial seat? Because it, it, it might happen.
Well, yeah, at, at the municipal level, that, in Henderson, um, I, I would, I would sit there and look at their track record as an attorney. Because most of them are coming as some sort of, you know, either a litigator or, um, out of the DA's office or something like that. And look at their track record.
Or the PD's office.
Right, yeah, public defender's office, yeah, and, and, and look at their track record on, 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 on their conduct, and how they did, and things like that, and, and make a decision based upon that. But, uh, the municipal court judge was just elected in, in, in.
Things happen.
Yeah, yeah.
People say, hey, you know, I'm, I'm out.
Out in midterm, yeah.
I wanna resign because all this evidence is coming against me, but I'll just say I'm leaving because of family reasons.
Not because I'm being investigated, I'm gonna be indicted, family reasons. That'd be my plea bargain.
Yeah.
You, things happen, and it has happened, we've seen it happen. Oh, I mean, we, we've been in this business for a very long time. You know, I, I've been doing this since nineteen ninety-eight, you know, and come to veterans in politics in oh-five. So this is, this is something that we, we, when people say that, hey, I'm leaving for personal reasons, nine out of ten, they're being pushed out.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Nine out of ten, they're being pushed out. So, there you have it.
Yeah, yeah.
But, um, with that said, Jim?
No, I'm good. I, I just really appreciate you coming on and sharing your ideas and thoughts with us. And I wish you well in your election.
Appreciate it. So happy you allowed me to come and close out the year with you guys.
And I'm just, I'm, I'm really glad that someone with your experience, uh, is willing to run for the city council.
Appreciate that, no.
I, I, I think you're well-versed. I, you know, I, I, I like your background, being a Marine, being an officer. You know, you come here dressed, I, I can't tell you how many people running for these political offices that are, I mean, when people, I'm, I'm not running for office. Come here, they're not dressed, you know, and, and played a part. I mean, if you're running for a political, played a part.
Just one of the, you know, it's your show, I just wanted to be part of it, you know, it's like, I don't wanna embarrass you.
You've done a good job.
I appreciate that.
You've done a good job.
So, so what's gonna happen is Mark is gonna zoom in on you.
Okay.
And you tell the people of Henderson, and if you wanna talk to council as well, why they should go with a special election, and why the people of Henderson need to put you in office, and why you believe you need to be in office. And if you have a website, um, any type of point of contact you wanna use, please address that as well.
All right. Well, thank you for having me here. Um, just a message out there to the voters in Ward One, and in fact, the voters all over Henderson, and, and anybody else listening to this that might know a voter in Ward One. My name is Aaron Johnson. If there, uh, is a special election, uh, I am going to run for, uh, council member in, uh, Ward One. Uh, I am focusing on public safety, I'm focusing on education, I am focusing on, uh, responsible growth. Uh, those are the, my, my hallmark things that I wanna focus on in, in that, that ward. Uh, my webpage is votearonjohnson.com. My email is votearonjohnson@gmail.com. And my Facebook page, uh, should be up shortly. Uh, again, votearonjohnson.com.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Folks, that's, uh, Aaron Johnson, candidate for Henderson City Council Ward One. Uh, Mr. Johnson is a United States Marine, once a Marine and always a Marine. He's also a police officer up in Boulder City. And now he's running to be Ward One new city, um, council, uh, person. And, um, I enjoyed my, my conversation with him, and, uh, again, the show is sponsored by Ron Quince. Happy two thousand and twenty-three, folks. May be safe, and, uh, and, you know, whatever family members that you have, um, hold them close to you because life is so doggone short. This is Steve Sanson, Jim Jones with Veterans in Politics. Until next time.